So.
Special, you're on recording.
Okay, we're gonna call the order, our pre-town meeting. I don't have a actual volume enhancing microphone, so I'm just gonna have to yell and anybody else is gonna have to yell. And maybe if you have a question or comment, it might be best if you lean in towards one of these mics, because then TV will pick it up. Otherwise, there's some mics over here and hopefully they'll be able to hear mine. So I guess you have a flag, so I want you to. So now, I guess the first thing I should do is say if anybody wants to run for moderator, that is open. I'm only here by popular request, so it's not time to get your attention on. And then, other than that, we'll start off before we get into all the exciting warning items. I'm going to turn over the microphone to, I guess, Mary and Barbara for a presentation.
Thank you.
Careful of the podium.
Okay. Touch it. Barbara, come up.
Yeah. Geez.
Be careful.
You looked at it the wrong way. I don't think.
Firewire fence. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to, well, we're here to do a lot of things, but let's start off right and honor a longtime dedicated public servant who has given a lot to Rutland Town. So we'd ask Jim Hall to come up, please. Jim, as you know, has served on our select board. He has served on our planning commission, on the Board of Civil Authority. You've seen him as a ballot clerk. He's been a justice of the peace and has helped with many, many elections. And he has, for 30 years, given dedicated service to our town. So I'm gonna have Barbara read it. And we are presenting this plaque to Jim as a very small token of our appreciation for all his stuff. So Barbara?
I've been kind of guessing at the 30 years. It's been at least 30 years, your wife says, but maybe more. But anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Roy.
Okay. After more than 30 years of dedicated service, the town of Rutland hereby recognizes Jim Hall for your deep sense of duty, unwavering commitment, and invaluable contributions to our town. The hard work, integrity, and pragmatism that you consistently displayed on the Select Board, Planning Commission, Board of Civil Authority, as Justice of the Peace, and helping with countless elections have left an indelible mark on our community. As you embark on this new chapter, we wish you joy, relaxation, and all the best in your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much, ladies. I really, I really appreciate this. And it does outline the number of years that I went over to the town office or come up here or some other place. And that's all, that's all great work. And I don't mind, I didn't mind that a bit. I guess it's born in me. I served in another town for, let's see, 12 years. 12 years over there in Royalton. So, thank you. Thank you once more. I really appreciate.
We have an opening for moderators. I don't think we have any room in the front.
Well, I'm sure that we'll find someone to fill that slot.
Thank you, Jim, very much.
Thank you.
Oh.
Okay. Anybody still have a microphone? All right, so now we'll start working our way through our warning. If there are copies available, maybe good copies for everyone or just us?
There's copies here.
For the warning?
For the warning.
Just us, okay. So I have to, we'll count down the audience participation on this piece to adjust the board. You have to follow along, make sure that the words coming out of my mouth match the numbers that you see and the numbers that are on our draft budget sheets. They should, but if we get enough eyes on it, maybe we'll get it. So the warning is, the legal voters of the town of Rutland, Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Rutland Town Elementary School on Post Road on Monday, March 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM to discuss Articles 1 through 19. Close of business meetings shall recess to 7:00 AM on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, at the Town Hall in Center Rutland for voters living on the west side of Route 7 and the elementary school on Post Road, voters on the east side of Route 7 to vote by Australian ballot on Articles 1 through 19, inclusive polls will close at 7:00 PM on March 4, 2025. And so we'll go through these and present the budget items as they come up. So Article Number 1, shall the voters authorized at the Select Board to approve 1,415,187, and no sense, to use toward the operation of the general fund budget to be offset by anticipated income and local option tax receipts from the state of Vermont, the remainder of which, if any, to be raised by taxes. And we've presented the split between Mary and Joe. And sheets, if you want, are those different budget sheets up here.
Okay. So you want us all up there presenting? All right. Let's start with, and I think you all have it. There's a single-page sheet at the top, and this is kind of the summary of everything that you will be looking at. So let's start with that, because there are some numbers on there that you probably did a sharp intake of breath, so let's get that out of the way. This summarizes what we're going to be asking the voters, and this is what is on our warning. So we have the general budget, highway, police, fire, rec. And there is an increase. The overall increase for our budgets is 6.96%. And the overall amount to be raised by taxes is close to 30%. Now, let me explain this and put it in a little bit of context. First of all, there are several things which have given the increase, and our folks will be reporting on these in individual budgets. The first is, we have done an across-the-board salary increase for employees of the town of Rutland of 3%. Cost of living, social security was, I think, 2.5, 2.6, somewhere in there. We decided to keep good employees. We were gonna do a cost-of-living increase at 3%. Health insurance is up all across the board. That is a very big driver. We have a few folks who were covered by spouses, so that did do some savings. We had some folks who have hit Medicare ages, and so that has helped some. But you will see, going through individual budgets, that healthcare costs contributed to our increase. And then general insurance costs are also up. We have policies with legal cities and towns, and those costs are up. So the increase in expenditures, that's where most of it is. We also had a decrease in income. If you look at our budgets, over half of what we spend on the town side in Rutland Town is paid for by income other than real estate taxes, okay? That's the 1% local option tax, which we have estimated and budgeted for 1.3 million this year. And we use that, it pretty much pays for all of the general budget and a chunk of the police budget. And you'll see those numbers if you look at those individuals. We have, for the past couple of years, have what we have called the Cortina Fund, the Hotel Fund, whatever you may term it. And we, as you saw, the payments to the town have ceased with the cessation, at least temporarily, of the Cortina as a homeless shelter. So we're not getting that income, and we're not gonna count on that income, which means that's less income coming to help and needs to be. That loss of income will be replaced by property tax income instead. There in, in the general budget, an $84,000 stormwater grant that we got last year that we did not get this year, and also in the Highway Department, about 111, 112 in grants that we got last year that we're not getting, this that we're proposing for the fiscal year coming. So decrease in income, increase in expenses, that's why we have the numbers that we do. But putting things in perspective, we don't have a large budget here. So overall spending is up in dollar figures, 244,000, just a little bit more than 244,000. Our income is down about 182,000. These are not big numbers, but when they translate over into percentages, that's where the shock value comes. So total gap from last year to this year is about 426,000. Decrease in revenue, increase in expenses. So now, if you'll turn briefly to the general budget, I'll show you where a couple of things on the income side show up. The general budget is about four, five, six pages long. The first part is where we get our income, all right, short of property taxes. And most of those figures are pretty much staying the same. We had some decrease in revenue in recording fees. You remember, we had a land boom a while ago, lots of real estate transactions, lots of recording fees. With the pandemic over, we hope, land sales have settled down somewhat. So there's a halfway down the first page, about $20,000 less in recording fees. Payment in lieu of taxes, we're gonna get less, about $8,000, $6,000 less from the state. And then on the second page, I mentioned the stormwater grant that we got last year. We will not be getting this year. So decrease in revenue on that way. And then for some of the, this is where the 3% across-the-board increase for employee shows up. First in social security, that is reflected there. We also had a new tax this year. It's the payroll tax, the childcare contribution tax. It isn't a big number, but it added $2,000 to what we pay. The town listers have picked up more of the work because our contract worker, who had done all of the personal property inventory, is no longer going to be doing it for the coming year. So the listers picked up some of the time, but we also saved a little money as well, not having to hire the contractor. And many of the numbers there on expenses are not significant increases, or they're not increases at all. On the third, fourth page of the general budget, halfway down, that's where the general insurance number is and the health insurance number. So you can see that those increases are there. And we also have an increase in new equipment. So some of the increases, I'm gonna let Joe finish off with the general budget, and then we'll hear some for the rest. But keep in mind, it looks like a big percentage, but the actual dollar amounts are not huge. So what we need to collect for additional revenue on the real estate taxes is less than half a million dollars. I should mention this, a couple of factors that we still don't know that may help with those. The grant list, when we launched the grant list, may increase in value, in which case, if that goes up, the applied tax rate will be less and will be taking less of your tax money because it's spread around a larger grant list. We may get some grants. In fact, Barbara and Mike Rowe and I are meeting to work on a grant application later this week. Our local option tax may be doing better than the 1.3 million we've projected. We don't know yet, but we've got another couple of installments coming in. And then, of course, there are the appropriations which voters will be asked to vote on. That's not included in here, but that will affect the tax rate as well. So I'll leave you with all of those thoughts. We think this is still a tight budget. I think if you look through and keep in mind what you faced in your own homes for increases on insurance and wages and so on, I think you'll agree with us. So we would ask your support for the general budget. Go.
Good evening, everyone. So Mary kind of left off where we were with the insurance. Things that the town doesn't have any control over are what are driving most of the increases in all of the budgets. The remainder of the page that we were working on below the insurance, everything is pretty much inflation amounts or basically the same. Going on to the, pretty much the next to last page here, begins with a bank interest and stuff. Our dues are up a little. Our fireworks actually down a little, but so some things are up and down. Most of these costs reflect, like I say, either inflation or just general upkeep. When you get down to the generator maintenance line, we did increase that with the construction of the new public safety building. We did have a generator at that facility when it was a fire station. That generator was moved up to the highway garage. It was inadequate for the new building. So we are adding another generator to the number of backup generators, the one here at the school and different places. So we increased the maintenance for those, and that maintenance does include the fuel for the generators. The, if you look at the line for the seniors, that no longer appears in the general budget, and that's gonna show up in recreation. Excuse me. Our appraisal update is down based on some other factors that go along through the state. And then, when we get down to the last two items on this front page, our public safety maintenance. So with the incorporation of two departments in one building, it became necessary for the, most of the basic costs for that building. The maintenance, we don't anticipate a lot of maintenance, but there will be some, and so we budgeted that. And then we kind of, five of us sat around and said, well, this looks like a good number for electricity, because we have no idea. So we're gonna have to have, because the current fiscal year we're in, the station won't be open for a full year. We're gonna have to go through a couple of years before this number will start to show a more accurate number. So maintenance, electricity, and then on the last page, you will see that the heating for the building, the building will be heated with propane, and we're anticipating around $5,000 based on other buildings. Because that building is connected to the city sewer system, we have to pay for the sewer pipe. We do not have to pay for water, because it's on a drilled well. And then the last item, new item, is the phone and internet service. So with the two departments there and the phone usage innocent, we came up with the $10,000. The total general budget comes out to 1,415,187. Of course, I left the income page over here somewhere. We have an anticipated income of 1,685,390, which, if all goes well, we will end up with a income surplus of 270,203. So basically, we anticipate that all of the revenue coming into the town, 1% money, interest, delinquent taxes, will cover the entire general budget, all of those numbers, and we would have a surplus of about 200,000. And those numbers, when you look at the first sheet that Mary talked about, those numbers are back, taken away from the anticipated tax month. Any questions? Go ahead.
Obviously.
No, no, it's okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah.
So I think it's on the, sorry, it's on page number, so I found this. I think it's on the third.
If you read, if you read the number on the left-hand column.
Yep, okay, 035176. It's the reporting supply. It's just up a little bit. I just, I'm not sure what recording supplies entails.
That's in the town clerk's office.
Yeah.
It was part of the cameras for what's necessary, because we've switched over to the COT system, so people can access town records online. There is a P V F, but there is also some basic supplies that the price has gone up that Kerry has to pay.
Makes sense.
Was that, was that relatively? I did it right?
We can.
Land records.
Land records.
And then on the, I have a couple, do you mind if I just continue?
No, just keep.
Okay, on the same page, on the bottom, 035205, it's the town hall agents. It's about cut in half? Is it because you've done all the remodeling there, so you're thinking there's not as much money installed?
No, no, it's because the next step in the remodeling is gonna be a lot of money. We are at the point where the plans are drawn up, pretty much. We are at the point of putting that project out to bid. What was the estimate?
Like 650.
Yeah, so you're talking 500, 600,000 to do everything that we need to do down there.
In that, in the town hall.
In the basement down hall. I mean, this is a complete renovation of that area's into office space, bathrooms.
Downstairs.
The downstairs.
The downstairs, which where we vote. The idea that has been kind of what the board has been looking at is, eventually that downstairs will be modeled, and these meetings will be held there. This will be like a community area for the town where we'll have internet, we'll have all of the necessary things, so meetings can be done virtually. And that space will be the dedicated space for telemeetings. We're hoping to get to that point. Funding it is the next project. That's actually where we are. We're at the stage of figuring out how we're gonna pay for it.
And then on the next page, 053210, professional services. I just see a drop in that. It looks like in '23, '24, we had like 22,000, and then last year we voted for a lot more, 35,000, but now we're back down to 23,000. And just kind of, kind of understand, five, there's such a situation in that budget amount?
It depends on, and I don't sure what we use all those services for, but if we have to hire somebody for specific research or get some professional information or, you know, it would be like if you were having an expert witness in the case. You know, so if we needed somebody to do that, and I'm not sure where we did spend it in the previous years, but it's for very, Kerry, what do we use these? Mostly attorney fees, isn't it? If we have to have somebody beyond the town's attorney to do some specific work that he's not up with or some special stuff. Sometimes I think the planning commission had some issues where we needed to hire somebody special that we have one time or something. I can't remember where we spent professionals.
Personnel policy.
Personnel policy took a lot of that. Yeah, so those kind of things where you have to hire somebody specific for a particular.
A landfill engineer, is that out of that as well?
No.
No, that has its own, I think, yeah, there's a difference.
Last question on this budget.
Yeah.
Stormwater, which is just down through 035218, so what are, so no. Oh, we didn't get there.
Yeah.
All right, I lost it with the, never mind.
All right, any other questions? Very good. Go, Jeff.
When, when do you guys actually move in?
Well, we had a lengthy discussion at our board meeting. The original plan had been sometime in November, but there's been some difficulties with getting equipment. We've had a few setbacks with that. So right now, I think the thing holding up the project is a fire sprinkler. When they went to order that, they found out there was a six-month lead time to get it and, which was double what was anticipated. So that pump is scheduled to arrive the end of this week, first part of next week. They're anticipating, they said two weeks to get it installed. I'm not sure, but it's, that's the thing, and we cannot occupy the building without a certificate of occupancy, and we can't get that without the sprinkler system. So I'm guessing if we're in there, if the police and fire can move in by the 15th of, 14th, 15th of February, I would think that would be a realistic number. You know, we're a few months behind, but that would be what I would anticipate. Yes?
I have a question. Can I apologize, Mary? Here at this page, before you have to, on interest. Looks like we speak a lot of interest income, but the budget doesn't come. Or we're not, just not even speaking a lot of interest.
Remember, we had the arca funds that were sitting there. They were generating some interest.
So now we don't have that.
And now we don't have that, because we spent that on the public safety.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Andrew? Very good.
Fair enough.
Okay, if anybody, mine, has a question, just raise your electronic hand, and I'm sure that Bill will let me know. Okay, one down. Article 2, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to raise by taxes an amount not to exceed 693,135.0 cents for use toward the operation of the police fund budget? And I will recognize myself for doing the police fund budgets. Okay. You'll see, we have two categories of income here. First, small, has to do with police reports. And frankly, I don't even remember what that's for, but the chief can tell us, I'm sure if anyone else. But the more significant is the SRO reimbursement amount, which is what we're anticipating to be reimbursed by the school district for the portion of the year that that officer is working at the school. So school board members, take note of the number. If you already approved your budget, but hopefully you have a similar budget on your expense side. On our expense side, you know, again, the same salary increases that Mary mentioned earlier. Health insurance obviously is affecting some things. Health insurance, we have lumped together, and yeah, it's actually going down overall because you have some folks that don't have to be covered by policies, so that sort of helps. But as you can see, over time, the general trend is upward. The, one of the more significant items in the budget that affects the overall numbers that Mary was talking about at the beginning is the fact that we have added another officer to enforce. The voters proved that last year. And this year, we effectively are recovering that increased expense through use of the hotel fund monies. So that cost was not passed on to the taxpayers this year, the current year that we're in. But for next year, there will be an increase in personnel costs because we have added an officer. We had some. We had some vacancy savings there for, well, a couple of positions. So we, we had vacancy savings, I guess, on the SRO position for a while because that was not filled for the first half of the year. We had added another position in the budget that wasn't filled until just, what, last week, I guess, we started, or a couple of weeks ago, so uh, well, or sorry, Jared, we started a couple of months later ago now, I guess, but beginning of the year, we didn't have that position filled. So we're now fully staffed up, uh, which is great. Uh, we'll be able to provide a lot more coverage. Uh, we saw the statistics earlier this evening from the chief on the number of calls, and, you know, they've increased dramatically over the last several years. A proportion of those calls that are coming from the south end of town right now have eased up, um, with the closure of the hotel, but some of that activity is also being spread around town. So there's plenty of work to do, and we're hoping to have them covering things for more hours, um, outside of just the, just the plaza. You know, we want to see some more patrols, and we want, uh, people to, to, um, get their calls returned. You know, if our officers aren't on duty, then, uh, those calls are going to the state. One or two things are happening, they're either going to state police, who may or may not be able to respond, or you're going on a list for our officers to get to when they have time. So we're happy to be staffed up with officers that, uh, we will, we'll have for a while. So on the, uh, expense lines again, um, we, you'll see that last year we had in the budget, um, a significant number on line, twenty-five, one oh three, outside detail salary. Uh, that was basically over time that we're paying officers to go work down at the plaza. Uh, so we're not budgeting for that this year. We, you know, because obviously we've hired another officer, we've also increased our overtime line because we were generally overspending over time, um, for a couple of reasons. Uh, so we, we put a little bit more on that line, but we've removed the outside detail salary. That's pretty much everything that's exciting. So, yeah, obviously, our, you know, the retirement line goes up because we've added another officer that we're paying into the pension for. I think that's everything on that. Are there any questions about the police budget? Yes, Marcia?
Okay, so just to be clear, we have the chief, and we have three officers that are patrol and do, you know, calls and so forth, and an SRO person. Is the SRO also, when they're like maybe in the summer, are they doing town, county's work during that time? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Also, I should add too that, um, the officer that we've just hired actually has higher set of qualifications than the officer that left. So we're actually going to be able to use that officer for more things than we were able to before.
I just wanted clarification. And the only question I actually have is, um, on the equipment line, did you mention liners and some of that equipment?
Um, so we have to upgrade our papers.
Okay.
Paper evidence. We have to name, everything, interesting is, uh, that was a nine thousand dollar, we reached over the goal. We, we some for, I think it's three to five years. That's the main increase right there.
And let me just repeat for the audio, because I don't know what's picking up. The question was about the equipment line, and the answer was tasers. But if you look, you know, if you do, if you look back a couple of years, um, it's really not as significant an increase as last year was last, for some reason. That's all. Sure. Anyone else? On line? Okay. So two down. Next up, article three. Shall the voters authorize the select board to raise by taxes amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and zero cents used toward the operation of the highway fund budget? And, uh, let's see, Kurt, did you draw the shorts, John?
I did. It's actually one of the, uh, easier budgets to present this year. So as we go through the income section, we didn't have any state grants for this coming, foreseen for this coming year. Actually, the application period opens up here coming up. And then, uh, as we go through our expenses, a lot of things are pretty much level funded as we go down through the first page. As we switch to the second page, again, we're more level funded until we get down to the municipal retirement and the health insurance. Those are big increases, like they are in every other department, unfortunately. And then we have training seminars that we increased. We have a pretty new crew now, so there's more seminars to get them trained up, so they're more equipped to do their job. Um, and then the winter contractors, we actually decreased ten thousand dollars. As we, now that we've bought more trucks, we're able to handle more callouts ourselves. You know, s- small dustings and whatnot, we can handle with our trucks, and we don't have to call our contractors in, so we're starting to decrease that. And as we come to our last page, um, communications is up. We have leased radios in the trucks, so everybody can communicate as they go around town, uh, fill in all the holes if they have a truck broke down, whatnot. Um, so that's an increase. And then the, uh, vehicle equipment maintenance, now that we're buying more trucks and our trucks are starting to age, our maintenance is starting to go up. As we saw in our orders of over ten thousand dollar repair bill on one of our trucks. So we have, it looks like a big increase on the budget because we don't have the income to back it. Um, so that's why we're up from eighty, fifty-five to nine ninety-three. Any questions? Marcia?
No.
I actually don't have any questions about that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I'm clicking the button up.
Thank you.
I should just want to know, how many more days it's going to snow?
I hope not many.
Article four. Shall we raise two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and zero cents for use toward the operation of the higher fund budget? Who's up? Sharon, come on up.
Is that the next one? I'll read it when I get to, just don't go far away. Sorry, I put it, I'm supposed to fall. The microphone points out.
Sorry about that, folks. They didn't feed me spinach when I was a little um, as you all know, we have the new public service building. Now, I've been questioned, and I'm sure, sure, some of my others on the board have been, you know, why don't we renew a new one? Well, give you a couple of reasons. One reason is the new trucks that come in are longer than what the old trucks were. So even with the old trucks, they would have to back it in and lower where their firemen, when they need them. Chris, wake up. Okay, can you come up and explain better why we have to have the longer room for the trucks?
I think Joey would do a great job.
They are bigger, but they're stumping above.
The Clarence, the Clarence station was terrible.
Right.
The new station is much better.
The only one that fit in there was me.
So basically, when the town built the two stations in nineteen sixty-seven, they built them for the equipment of the time. And as time goes on, between that FPA standards and different standards, different things need to be included in every fire truck. So needless to say, they become taller and longer. Um, McKinley Avenue Station, we had to back the trucks in under the beams. So every fire truck that was built could only be built to about, I don't know if it was like nine, eight tall or they had to be under a certain height to fit in under the beams. If you backed a truck in with no water on it, the lights in the back would catch the beams, and they'd be on the floor. So the building was from nineteen sixty-seven, they aged out, they were too small, inadequate. With the, with the, um, coming of our police department, they operate in a room that's about a tenth the size of this building. So it was very obvious that we needed to build a fire station, and that's how the town started this project. We, when I was chief and we started with center station, we knew that within ten years, eight to ten years, McKinley would have to go, and we would have to do the same thing. So incorporating two agencies within one building, um, saved the town acquisition cost of land, um, just of core, uh, facilities for the building, heating, plumbing, all of that stuff to facilitate two um, agencies within one building actually saved us from having to duplicate it. So, uh, that's how we got to where we are with the new building. What's reflected in the budget Sharon's going to be giving are basically increases in stuff that we have no control over. There are a few decreases in Chris's budget because all of the, um, utilities for what was a McKinley station have now been transferred to the general budget, accompanied by two, uh, different, um, agencies that are now in the same building.
Thank you, Joey. The other question I was given the other day when I was trying a grocery shop, um, I was asked about um, the bank, as you drum, come on McKinley and you go up, you'll see there's a bank there, and there's some, oh, like a wall there. So I got asked, well, that wall is sinking. So I said to my husband, after a guy wouldn't leave me alone, I said, take me up by the fire station, and look at what we need to look at. And he said, that's not falling down. He said, when you put, and Kurt filled me in a little more on this, as did Joey. When you, when you're packing fresh dirt, it has to be tamped. And they tamped and tamped and tamped it, but still, it's fresh dirt. And still, it's going to take a few years for it to get good and tight, am I correct, Kurt? So that's what the problem is there. We can't change that. You know, I could go in my little shovel and keep damping, but that's not going to get me too far. So that's what happened there. You know, we're doing the best we can. Our fire trucks now fit into that building, which is a godsend. And again, just like the police, um, these folks didn't have much room to get around. I know Mary and I did a, a thing of, or at McKinley, and, I mean, we were, we did platters and stuff, and we were kind of having a tough time to, she's tall and thin, and I'm short, and me. So, um, you know, that's just what it is. We tried to keep the budget as best we could, but we can't keep putting off what needs to be repaired because it's already came back to haunt us. And, you know, you, you've got to take care of things, and you've got to add to new things. And I know people get upset. I don't want my taxes changing. I don't like it either. I'm a senior citizen. But I also realize if we're going to preserve our town, we've got to take care of our town. If I'm right, right? You taught me that. You don't just let it decay, so. I will, I'm not going to read these down to you because I think you're intelligent enough people that you can read. So I, I always get very frustrated when I've got to read to you when I know darn well. Especially Marcia likes to read. So, um, you know, that's, I think it's a beautiful building over there. I know there was a lot of people, including my husband, that said, how could you put it over there? Well, that didn't cost us anything, and we fit the building there, and it's working. And even he had to, um, admit to me, it's working. The other question I was asked is the back of the building, where there is another gentleman, I think he's an attorney, that owns that land behind, and it was very nice to not complain, let us put Phil in there. And this other man complained that it was going to flood that man's land. Now, the man whose land it is has no complaints because I checked. So I don't know what to say to people. Sometimes you just feel like, sometimes people like to complain. But we're doing our best. We all work. We all, we all try to dardondus to try and get everything right. We work with our police, we work with our fire department. We have two extraordinary chiefs, so we better be thankful that we have, and we have a volunteer fire department. And, you know, these guys come out. I wouldn't want to go out tonight and fight a fire, and I wouldn't want to be a police officer direct, directing traffic at a fire tonight. So I think we're very lucky who we have for fire and police chief. So, any questions?
I just have two.
Okay, Marcia.
I love that, not even a question. Um, uh, the telephone and internet, so the fifth one down, it's an increase in the telephone and internet? And I just, I, I, the telephone and internet for the public safety building is under the public safety on the general fund budget. So I just couldn't question what the increase in this.
Yeah.
It's for the Center Rutland Station specifically.
Okay.
And we have added functionality to our phone system, so across the town.
Okay, perfect. And the only other question is the cable service is cut in half.
Yep. We found a much less expensive option.
Okay.
He works hard. And he has five people telling him.
Yeah, let me just thing here.
Okay.
And, uh, the other good news is you still have to pay for this building because so far we're paying the first year of interest on the bond as a one percent money, so that's nice too. Uh, eventually, both bonds, the both buildings are going to hit, but not yet. So, uh, we're up to number five, shall we raise one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and zero cents for use toward the operation of the, uh, recreation fund budget? And again, Sharon's up.
Okay, I'm going to start off by telling you, when recreation started in this town, there were five people. And I would name all five, except that I would get something wrong. I know Carol Donardo, Don Choffee, uh, Nancy Fergus. And there were a couple of others that, that worked to get Northwood where it's at. I came on right after that, myself, Larry Del Venary, Ernie Choffee, and we worked. I would climb down in the pool to scrub it, and they would scream at me because I was too little to get down there, but they couldn't fit down there. So they couldn't get down the ladders when there was no water, so. And I, I can remember hanging from a pipe across the pit to get the motor running. And then I'd get Tony Flori screaming, you can't let a girl in there. Well, we did it, but took many, many people to run Rutland Town Recreation and to bring it where it is. However, Mike Rowe, you'll notice that he, that his salary has gone up considerably this year. So it's gone up considerably because Mike So it's gone up considerably because Mike has retired from the school and is going to be running recreation both winter and summer. And Mike has done a wonderful job. If you go to Northwood, it is spectacular. And, and I give him a lot of credit. We also have a problem with the pool, so I'm going to make Mike come up. And he's going to get mad at me, but I need him to come up and explain to you why we have to look forward to the pool's forty years old. Come on, Michael. No, you can come over here.
But Cam, you've been here.
Oh, wait, yes, that's okay. The camera isn't going to break because of you.
What do you want me to explain?
I want you to explain about the pool and the condition that the pools are.
Oh, well, our pool is built in nineteen eighty, eighty one. So it's been around fifty plus years, so, or thereabouts. So it's going to need to be redone at some point. So next year we'll be starting to look at some different options for replacing the pool. So that will be part of my task as taking on the full-time director as well as many other tasks. I already do a majority of the maintenance work there. So if you looked at the line item and you followed what I get paid, it's an increase of about fifteen thousand dollars, what I already currently make. So just so you know, the, the current directors around the area make around fifty grand or more. And so that's why I moved to that. It helped with that I was retiring as well. So that's basically the big change. Along with more programming is taking the seniors, as Jim is very happy about it, so is Mary. The seniors under our wing as well and doing a much more expanded program for them as well moving forward. So there's lots of things on my mind to do and I'll be in a position to spend way more time on that. Yeah, townwide celebration, all things will be transferred over to me. So that's the increase for me going to full-time. And then the only other increase on there was, if you looked at it, was the senior and the municipal side as far as municipal retirement had to be put in as well being that I'll be a full-time employee for the town. But I will not take any insurance. So that, I'm off the books for that. So you don't have to worry about that. My wife is going to take care of that. Pretty much it.
That's it, sir.
Do you have any questions on the budget? Marsha?
Yes.
The maintenance, maintenance labor is reduced?
Yes.
I just.
So this is how, so. Yep. So basically what happens is we have another maintenance worker that works over doing and helps me out occasionally. So he's only a part-time and works about ten to fifteen hours a week. And so he will stay in that role and we just basically just put the money that was originally in maintenance. We just did some shuffling so that I'll be doing the same that I'm doing maintenance-wise. But I'm just going to be doing more programming-wise. So that's why there was a decrease in that and an increase in mine. But we still had to keep that because also the highway department has skills that I don't possess and equipment that I don't possess that we often call on to do work at the park or at bar. Another one? Ab, did you have a question or were you just, no? Somebody else? Wrap it up.
The only thing I'm asking, Mike, is that, that Matt and Mary and I are pretty darn good cooks. And, and I hope you use us wisely for the townwide celebration.
Sure. We'll use you. Yeah, we'll use you. You can cook to be a senior too. Now you just, now you just offer.
Yeah, you just volunteer yourself both.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, I think that's about it. Anybody else? If you have any suggestions, call Mike. He's a good man. I, I don't like that choice. He's a good man and I appreciate, again, we're pretty lucky in this town. We think our connection.
So we even, we even cook for some of the dogs at the townwide celebration. You just have to watch for when it drops on the ground. Get through our budgets. All right, number six. Okay, so we're now on to appropriations. And I'm not seeing anybody that is likely to want to speak for any of these agencies. If you are, raise your hands. Somebody, I'll just go through them real quick here. We've got six hundred and seventy dollars for RSVP, eight hundred dollars for ARC, fifteen hundred dollars for the Southwestern Mountain Council on Aging, three thousand dollars for Child First Advocacy Center, thirty-five hundred dollars for the Transit District of Us, four thousand ninety-four dollars to be the Chamber and Economic Development for the, I think it's for the marketing, but this is along with area businesses and municipalities for the ultimate goal of growing the economy. So that was ninety-four dollars for that. I think that's based on dollar per person, I think is what they were going for in the town. That's why they came up with that random number. Number twelve, forty-five oh two for Rallin Mental Health. Seventy-seven hundred dollars towards supporting work with the VNA and hospice in the southwestern region. One of our favorites, fifteen thousand dollars for scholarships to be awarded to twenty twenty-five high school graduates of the town of Rutland who have resided in the town at least two years and wish to attend institutions of higher learning. Fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for the regional ambulance. One hundred ten thousand, ninety-five dollars for the Rutland Free Library. Okay, and now we have a couple of items, depreciation schedules.
Anyone like to speak for the library?
Oh, yes, Joe, please.
Please do. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the library real quick. We are asking for a, about a three percent increase in tax support based on last year's budget. We are working to create as tight of a budget as we possibly can. However, with so many things, insurance as well as, you know, long-term support for our, our building, you know, is costing more money. Three percent definitely represents the, the tightest possible budget we can create. And it's one that also does anticipate a potential inflationary costs due to this being a negotiating year with our staff. The library has been doing a lot of great stuff in and around the community. More and more students have been accessing it this year than ever before. I know that as our school librarian is something that we really do a lot with, especially when it comes to research as well as also getting other books for students. And it's become definitely something that more of our children also attending programs, including signing up for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which gets books into the hands of our youngest citizens from the time of birth until the time they are five years old. And that's been a really great support for a lot of kids coming in. You know, a lot of our children that are born in Rutland Town, they are able to get access to a lot of books. And every year I'm less and, I'm more and more happy and less and less surprised that when I pull out one of my favorites that my son got from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and half the kids in pre-care are like, oh, I read that one. We got that in the mail. Or, oh, I read that one. We heard it at Storytime at the library. There's so many great things that are happening there and it's benefiting all of our children as well as our, the rest of the citizens in town. It's a fantastic research, a resource for everyone and it's something that, you know, is going to be benefiting all of us for years to come as all of our young people keep growing up and as all of us need access to more things. Thank you for any support, Mike, if.
Any questions or comments for Joe? All right, was it, is there anybody else online who wanted to speak to any of the other of those organizations? Not seeing any. We'll go back to the exciting topic of depreciation funds. And earlier this evening, the board approved a couple of tweets in the language. Maybe you don't have any, so. Something in the morning, so not everyone has it. I'll read the correct language as we have to do this. So Article seventeen will be the Recreation Depreciation Fund. So should we tell the town of Rutland, increase the rate of funding of the Recreation Department Depreciation Fund for the replacement, repair, and/or maintenance of recreation equipment and infrastructure for the present rate point zero one two five for a hundred dollars, or that translates to one point two five cents to the rate of point zero one seven five, also known as one point seven five cents for one hundred dollars of assessed property valuation. And number eighteen is similar for the Highway Department. And that is, shall the town of Rutland increase the rate of funding of the Highway Department Depreciation Fund for the replacement, repair, and/or maintenance of highway equipment and infrastructure at the present rate of point zero zero five, also known as half a cent for one hundred dollars, to the rate of point zero one, also known as one cent for one hundred dollars of assessed property valuation. Any questions or comments on depreciation? Anybody want to add to that affliction? Then lastly, you have following list of elections taking place. Moderator, term of one year. Otherwise, I might be back. Need a grand juror for term of one year. We have two select board seats open, one for a term of two years and one for a term of three years. Lister for a term of three years. Second constable for a term of two years. Cemetery commissioner for a term of three years. And two spots in the school board. Yeah, one of those is for two years and one of those is for three years. So maybe opportunities to get involved, if anybody wants to run. And then we'll transact any other necessary legal and proper business. And that's it for the morning. So the last questions or comments for this portion of the meeting. All right, then I guess what we'll do is recess momentarily as long as we switch over to the school board and we're going to do this proper business. Recording.
Welcome to the school board portion of the three-time meeting. The motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Marshall, approving agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? All in favor? Any public comments before we get into our budget presentation? All right, and I will go over to Lewis.
Okay. So tonight we're discussing the FY twenty-six Rutland Town Budget. The budget expense is currently up by seven point five percent, which is equal to seven hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. And that's made up of three main categories. Contractual salary and benefits are up by three hundred and thirty thousand, which is forty-one percent of the increase. Building repairs are up three hundred and fifty thousand, which is forty-four percent of the total increase. And that's due to one-time capital building repairs that were added to the budget for FY twenty-six. And then secondary tuition is fourteen percent, which is one hundred and fourteen thousand. And then all, all other increases are the other one percent increase. Educational spending, which is the amount we have to raise in property taxes, is up by three point two five percent. And the, the reason between, the difference between the expense and education spending is that we have two prior year surpluses that are being used to offset taxes. We have four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which was a Rutland Town prior year surplus from FY twenty-four. And we have a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which was an FY twenty-four surplus for GRC SU that was refunded. So there's currently a little over five, about five hundred and forty thousand that's being used. This is one-time revenue. So there's three main factors that are state-level factors that impact our tax rate. So even after the board approves the expense budget, we then have to look at these factors to determine what the impact is going to be on taxpayers. So we take our education spending, which is up by three point two five percent. And we then have to divide it by the equalized pupils. Equalized pupils is, it's a weighted pupil number. So the, at the beginning of the school year, we take a, in what's called an ADM count, which is our average daily membership. And we provide that information to the state. And the state then waits that data based on several different factors, including poverty, level of education, like secondary, pre-K, elementary, small schools, population density. And, and they provide an, an equalized pupils or a long-term weighted ADM number. Rutland Town's pupil count is increasing from last year from seven sixty-nine to seven ninety-four, which is a three point three two percent increase. An increase in equalized pupils decreases the tax rate. So the spending per pupil is thirteen thousand, four hundred and nine, which is a point seven percent decrease from last year. The next step in the calculation is to, to look at the property yield and how that impacts the tax rate. The property yield is something that's set by the legislators each year. We are given a recommendation from the Tax Commissioner on December first. And most districts have that as, as for purposes of calculating tax rate. The actual yield isn't decided until late in the legislative session after town, after town meeting, usually in April, May, once most budgets are approved. The recommendation that's being given right now is eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. You can't directly compare that to last year's number because the calculation has changed since last year. At the very end of the legislative session last year, the legislators passed the new bill, which applies a statewide adjustment factor to both the property yield and the CLA. The, the statewide factor this year is seventy-two point three six percent. So if, if you were to actually remove that adjustment factor, the, the new yield would be a twenty percent increase and would be approximately eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That adjustment factor is applied to both the yield, decreasing the yield, but it increases the CLA. The net impact on the tax rate is zero. So it just, it just, it moves the difference from the yield to the CLA. So we take the spending per pupil and divide it by the property yield to get our equalized tax rate, which is a dollar fifty-six. And then also passed last session was a incent, a cent incentive discount because of, because Rutland Town was negatively impacted by Act one twenty-seven. The incentive last year was seventeen cents. And it lasts for five years. Each year it decreases by twenty percent. However, this is also being adjusted by that statewide adjustment factor of seventy-two point three six percent. So we take the seventeen cents, we times it by eighty percent, and then we apply that statewide factor, and it's actually an increase in the discount to, from seventeen cents to eighteen point seven nine, it's eighteen point seven nine cents. After we apply that, we have an equalized tax rate of a dollar thirty-seven, almost a dollar thirty-eight. The last step in the calculation is to apply the CLA, which is a common level of appraisal, which compares the fair market value of homes to the assessed value of homes. When those two numbers are equal, CLA is at one hundred percent. As the fair market value increases, the CLA decreases. So last year's CLA was seventy-five point four three percent. This year's actual CLA, before the statewide adjustment factor, is seventy-two percent. But once we apply that statewide factor, it brings the CLA up to one hundred point seven six percent. So, as I said earlier, the yield decreased, it should have been, the yield should have went up, but it decreased due to the application of that adjustment, and then the CLA is increasing to help offset that. So the estimated tax rate after you apply the CLA is a dollar thirty-seven, which is a twelve point nine three percent decrease from last year. And then this last slide is just some information that has been asked in the past as to how much money is being collected in taxes, and of that money, how much is staying in Rutland Town and how much is going to Montpelier? So I've provided several years' worth of data here. So in FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, of all the money that was collected in taxes, it all stayed in Rutland Town. Rutland Town actually received money from Montpelier of, in FY twenty-three, we received two hundred eighty-six thousand; in two thousand twenty-four, we received one hundred and sixty-one thousand. In FY twenty-five, which is the current year, we are not receiving any money from Montpelier, we're actually sending four hundred and forty, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to Montpelier out of the money that's being collected. That information is not available for next year's budget yet, that's not decided until after budgets are approved and tax rates are officially set by the treasurer, so we don't have that information to provide at this time.
Based on the new calculations, do you anticipate that shifting differently? I mean, do you understand?
As far as how much we're sending to Montpelier? I don't know enough about the calculation and the grand list and how that all works to the, to give you a positive answer. I would think as your, as your tax rate increases, that's why you were, last year, your tax rate increased significantly, about twelve percent, and that's why I think attributed to you sending more money to Montpelier because of that increase in the tax rate, where your budget didn't grow enough to substantiate all of that money being used. With your tax rate decreasing twelve percent this year, I think it might swing back the other way because now you're collecting almost, almost thirteen percent less in taxes, and your budget is, is increasing, your spending is increasing three percent, so you're still going to have to cover that full budget with thirteen percent less money. So I think it's going to swing back the other way, instead of sending money to Montpelier, you'll be receiving money from Montpelier, but I can't be positive about that.
Slash, I know we already, whatever that is, whatever we signed that thing. At the time, the last board meeting, I had thought that one hundred ninety would be allocated to asbestos mitigation was everything, but looking back, I don't think that was. So I, I don't know the steps, obviously, we have time between here and March third and actual town meeting all day, but it sounds like, in checking with Kelly, the total cost of the mitigations around two hundred and seventy-six thousand, so it's like eighty-six thousand more, which I think at this point might be worth us putting that back in the budget to cover the entire mitigation of asbestos this year. I think, bottom line, it may cost us like another cent, but we're still going to deliver pretty sizable property tax discount to the property tax fare, but why do two-thirds? But we probably should just do it all, so take it for later.
I was speaking to Lewis, and I think, picking the fact that the town's budget is up and taxes are going to be higher on that side this year, I do think that we'll have the money to cover asbestos. What were your ideas of how to be for it if it goes over the budget?
So we're anticipating some money coming in this year due to tuition overcharges to the allowable process, so we should be getting a sizable refund from that. We also have money in the capital improvement funds, as well as our regular repairs line, which could be utilized for some of them.
I feel like they have a plan, so we've kind of talked about this, and seeing the town side tonight makes me a little less eager to increase, decrease. That's just my opinion, I'm not, I'm one of five, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, the three hundred and fifty thousand is a large sum of money that we can make do with what we have, with the other money that he said that there's available, and, you know, next year, we could do some more next year, but get as much done as we can this year with the money we have allowing.
I think the town, considering where they were last year, I would say, you know, let's do that, but seeing that huge side, the increase on their side, they all work together for property chances, right?
Sure, but what if, what if everything, if the town swings it off next year?
It, it might, but I think that we have enough money to cover that rest entirely with what we already have, at least according to suspended.
Well, those are potential rebates from overcharging tuition, but if the cost of carpets, two eighty-six, and we have budget of one ninety, we don't have it, we're just expecting money to show up from somewhere else. Why wouldn't we just budget it all? And if we have surplus, then deliver a revenue increase next year to the property taxpayers and put that back in the habit of the budget. But I don't think we have a capital, a tense budget to, a reserve fund to mitigate asbestos, more like a blow goes up. Say, two-thirds of it. And still have an over twelve percent reduction in property taxes. At the time, in November, when I'd, you know, I'd look at the minutes, I said, let's take a look at the three and a half percent increase, we didn't have no idea of the CLA adjustments at the time, said, let's, let's look at a three, three and a half percent increase in education spending, and then have, which, manufacture what we could do with the surplus, so then that, that kind of broke up arbitrarily, the one ninety. I think we're sitting in a much better position had I known that in November, I was going to get it all and see where it breaks down, but a lot has shifted since then. That's just mine, yeah.
It was, if you change that and put in the three hundred and fifty, well, we already have three fifty, yes, but then if you put all of it in, or what he's asking, eighty-six thousand, what would the adjusted tax rate?
If I added a hundred and fifty thousand, it would increase two cents, and our decrease would now be eleven point one four percent.
That's on the hundred and fifty?
Yeah. That's approximately what would be needed to finish the project.
So, yeah, what's the number, I guess? I asked Kelly, what's the total number, and I got two seventy-six.
His estimate on this five-year plan was a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year for three years.
But part, everything was a hundred and twenty-five a year, because it costs more to do it piecemeal than just, so he said there would be a savings.
Correct, but we don't, we're not sure what it's going to cost, because it's been, I think, a couple of years since we've gotten a quote, and he's been hesitant of getting another quote, just because if we ask for a quote for too many times, we may lose vendors that are interested in the, in the project, because they won't believe that we're actually moving forward with it. So, at the time that he got those numbers, I mean, they're a couple of years old, but it was roughly an estimate, it's an estimate, so, but it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand times three years, so three seventy-five. If we were to do it all at once, there's potential savings because we can do less testing, a testing is the big part of the cost, and if they only have to come out, if they have to come out fewer times, then the cost is a lot less, because there's a minimum charge every time they have to come out and test. So if they're doing, if we're doing one room at a time, it's the same cost to do that one room as it is to do a bulk rooms.
Yeah, the old quote's eleven dollars per square foot, so that's, and eleven dollars a square foot, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars of remediation plus another thirty-six thousand to replace the rest of the whole of the carpets.
So that's your two room basis rate?
Yeah.
Good. Who's in this?
Can I ask a question? Lewis, when you said if there, we were overcharged for tuition, that we can't just use that money, though, right? Because usually when there's a revenue, we can't just use that money.
It could be used in the same year, so if we get that refund this year, we can use it this year.
It can, okay. If we get that refund this fiscal year, we can use it the following fiscal year?
No, we can use it in this current year. As soon as June thirtieth comes, then that money gets restricted.
But we won't be able to start this before June thirtieth?
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if that's the case or not.
Yeah, there's no way, I mean, you have to go out to bed, and they'd have to start this by June, before June, that would be my concern, is that, I don't know.
So they may be able to do some of the testing at the end of June. I mean, we have six months, so. Or there could be other projects that he has lined up to use regular repairs money for, for next year that he can use, he can do those projects this year, and then just save that money for next year's budget. But I mean, if we wanted to look at what a hundred thousand would be, I mean, I can run any scenario we want, but, so, I mean.
What's a hundred thousand?
A hundred thousand is eleven point six one percent decrease, it's about a penny and a half. A hundred thousand, the spending per pupil increase, which is the number that's going to show up on the ballot, is a one point two, one point two seven percent increase.
Is that one point two?
One point two seven, a spending per pupil of thirteen thousand five eighty-seven.
Do you have any idea of how much money you'll be having come back from the tuition rebate?
I don't have the exact amount, but it should be around a hundred thousand.
But we can only use that if we haven't done, if we have everything by June thirtieth.
It would have to be utilized, if, if the money comes back this year, they have until, they can give it to us next year as well, and so I'm not sure exactly when we're getting it at this time, but, so if we get it this year, then we can utilize it by June thirtieth. And after that, it becomes part of the surplus, which would be a discussion that we have next fall. But if they, if they give it to us next year, then, then we have the ability to use it next year.
Sounds a little bit, you don't, you don't know if we'll have the money to.
I mean, I'm leaning on the side of making that adjustment, partly because, well, one, we know that, you know, the state's already auditing all the, you know, we, we know that that's coming down the pipe, and they're looking at what pools are in the best condition. And then, you know, the select board just stood up here and said, why do we build this fire station? Because we can't defer maintenance, right? So, like, I.
It's also because their trucks didn't, they weren't really fitting the other one.
True. So, I mean, that's just kind of ringing to me, it's like, you know, this is a maintenance factor that, I, I'm pretty sure we've talked about this since I joined the board, you know, eight years ago, and this is, I feel like one of the first opportunities that we can make it happen, you know, because we were, in previous years, talking two, three percent shifts up or down, and have some opportunity like this.
I know over the thirty years I worked here, the school board would never give me three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend on any front, so I think three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, damn good chunk of money, to spend on these projects and get them going, and use the other surplus money to, you can, you can get this, you can spend this money now, for sure.
So you want to increase it or not?
What's that?
You want to increase it or not? Just a few now, one person, give the dream that you want.
They can make it work, they can make it work.
I mean. Prices are increasing all the time, to see if we can get it now. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's still eleven point one six percent increase, our budget, I would say, I'm leaning towards adding. I just, I just, you can't really rely on that money now to say we're going to have it, because we don't, I mean, there's so many other people, factors, that are not going to come through June thirtieth.
I think we want it to come after. It comes after we have more time to do this.
Yes, because if it doesn't, we have to get everything done, you know, there's so many factors on the year.
See, we're in a fiscal position to do this since 2025, I've been hearing about asbestos since I was a kid, and I'm thinking, why don't we just put the money in to get rid of all, remediate it all?
So did you?
Quite baffled that it's not all gone to be, yeah.
Oh, because anything that's underneath the carpet and is encapsulated, you don't have to touch. If they want to put new flooring, that's where, open that can, I think you can do all this other stuff. It's not just the asbestos glue that we're taking up, we want to put down new flooring as well, that's zero maintenance. You don't have to strip it for nothing, just sweep it off. So that's, that's why all this is out there. And I have no problem with that by all means, but.
Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we amend the already-passed budget to add back a hundred thousand towards full remediation of asbestos.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Is that it? So it's three yes, two no, the motion passes.
So are you going to make a separate motion on the budget amount? I can give you that number.
Sure.
It's eleven million.
So, I'll make a motion that we rewarn total expense of eleven million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the FY twenty-six.
Thirty-five cents, is that correct?
Sure.
I was just making sure that it was the same number.
Yeah, that's.
Make it flat, zero.
So can you just clarify the total amount that will be budgeted for HVAC and the asbestos abatement, Lewis?
It's a hundred and sixty thousand for HVAC. It's a hundred and sixty thousand for HVAC and two hundred and ninety thousand for asbestos. Thank you. So that'll result in a spending per pupil of thirteen thousand five eighty-seven, which is the one point two seven percent increase, and that
Say it again.
With an estimated tax rate of a dollar thirty-nine, which is an eleven point six one percent decrease.
With
Not. So you just made a motion to approve the amount? Which will result in per pupil education spending thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven to one point two seven percent higher than for the current year of spending per pupil education. So I will, continue any discussion?
Questions, I don't know if you have things that are related.
I could take it now, Lewis? You're here?
Okay, um, uh, I just, the, on the website, it had like a little summary, it changes, I'm sorry, I couldn't screen those data, but there was a mention about small increases in multiple lines that were underfunded, a statement, I don't know if that's still true and accurate for this current budget that you're talking about?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, so I guess, I'm just curious to know, how can a line be underfunded and you have a five hundred and forty thousand or four hundred and thousand dollar surplus in your budget when lines are underfunded? It doesn't make sense to me, that's an equate. How, I, I, I don't think the school has ever had that large of a surplus. Um, you know, two, three hundred thousand is is the most I've ever seen it. So to clear over half a million dollars in surplus, and I know a hundred and nineteen of it was a reimbursement, I think, from the SU, is that correct, Louis?
The hundred and nineteen's not part of the four hundred and twenty-four, that's in addition to.
Repeat that, please?
There was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar SU refund, but that's not part of the four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar surplus, it's in addition to.
Right, which totals five hundred and forty-seven, right? So, but still, four hundred thousand dollars surplus in a budget? And I'm quite, as a taxpayer, I I'm really set back by that and shocked, especially after everything went through last year, I think it was three times we had to go for our budget. Um, it's, it's kind of shocking and it's kind of disturbing, I I, you know, physically, fiscally responsible. That's, that's what we're supposed to be, so I just am, just saying I'm really set back by that. But my questions are, and I'm just gonna go through the budget to, like, point out some things that I have questions, if you can answer them. So on the first thing, um, I noticed that preschool has increased in supplies and books, but when I go to direct instruction, which I'm assuming that's the K to A direct instruction, because, um, there's no increase in supplies or books, and I'm just curious enough, but then when I look at the, I think it's the principal's office, there's an increase in supply, so I'm just curious, you know, you have actual numbers. So I compare those actual numbers of twenty-four, and what we budgeted in twenty-five, and then what you're projecting for twenty-six. I'm just curious about those increases
Okay.
in those areas, but then maybe not in the others.
So to, um, I'm gonna answer that question, but first I want to answer your first comments regarding the surplus. Um, so the surplus was a result of a a few different hi- items, which I can highlight. Um, but all of our districts have seen larger than normal surpluses during this time of ESSR funds. Um, and and that is because with so much ESSR funds available, uh, we weren't tapping the local budget for all new items that that came about, if it was eligible under the grant, we utilized the grant first. In addition, we also had some positions that we were able to add into our budget over the course of uh, of the years, i- if they were important positions, that we were funding through the grant. And and so for many of our districts for the last year or even two years, we were seeing local savings, because those positions were budgeted locally and being paid for out of the grant. So that when the grant funds went away, uh, we didn't have to add it into the budget a- at that time, those those funds were already in the local budget, and so we were having those savings uh, for the last two years. So that that is the main reason. Also, uh, over the last few years, we've had a lot of difficulty filling positions and having to to be creative with with positions, uh, because the staffing market has has been very difficult. Um, so as far as the surplus goes, a large portion of it was salaries and benefits for either savings from ESSR or due to unfilled positions. Uh, we also had some tuition savings, which is outside of our control. There was some repair savings for money tha- that was in the budget, just but they weren't able to get projects completed because of uh, the lead time for contractors, it's difficult to find contractors. Um, and then there was some transportation savings, and and that's what makes up a a majority of 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 the surplus. A- as far as the the small increases in individual lines, um, so when I meet with the administrators each each year, uh, to go over the budget, uh, one of the things they look at is each individual lines, and so, uh, I mean, many of the lines, if not all of them, have, um, variances, whether it's, they they underspend them, they overspend them. I mean, the budget is just an estimate, and that is an estimate that the 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 principal has to to work with for for the needs for the school for that year. Uh, but one of the exercises, we look at the actuals compared to the budgets, and if we're constantly overspending that budget line, or if we know that that budget line is not going to be sufficient um, for that year, and we're not talking about the budget as a whole, but i- i- these small budget lines, knowing that in with inflation and prices increasing, um, the principal will look at individual lines and say, oh, we need to increase this line a little bit, because maybe we added a program, or we know prices are going up, or we're, we've been close to spending that full budget line each year, so let's, let's increase it. And they're not increases that are all large enough or noteworthy enough to to make it into the the highlights of the budget. Um, so we just lump them in as, okay, any, there was a bunch of lines that maybe it was five hundred dollars here, or a thousand dollars there, uh, that we increased just to to help fund those individual lines. As far as your last question regarding supplies, uh, so I think, looking at the actuals to compare it to the budget amounts, two of those lines, the ones that were increased, uh, pre-K was increased by five hundred dollars, and so was the principal lines. The actuals were were not exceeding the budget, but were fairly close to that budget line. Whereas in the direct instruction supply line, there was a budget of fifty thousand dollars, but the actuals were, that were spent were only forty-one thousand, so there was nine thousand dollars in in money that was not spent, um, so there was not a need to increase that budget line.
Okay, um, and, uh, in, in insurance buyouts, are you, are you guessing how many of those are, or you have a better, a more solid figure about what that looks like?
Uh, so all health insurances, I mean, it's it's a a guesstimate based on employees that are employed at the time, based on the plans that they are taking or not taking. So we're we're just kind of making some assumptions based on what we know today.
And I'm talking about the insurance buyout, I'm not talking about the insurance plans and the wages and things like that, I'm saying the insurance buyout itself.
Yeah.
Don't take the school's insurance, get a buyout.
Correct.
Are you estimating that, or are you like, we have those numbers, like, these people are still like, this is what they
We are estimating based on the information that we have today for the employees that are taking that buyout.
Okay. Uh, on the second page, um, I guess, I'm looking at guidance, your supplies, books, and periodicals, like, you were at like nineteen hundred, and you're going to like, up to three thousand?
Can you repeat that page again? What?
Uh, I'm just on the second page, top, uh, along the list. It's in the guidance services.
Okay. Books, it looks like there was nothing budgeted, from the guidance for books, there was nothing budgeted, we increased the budget to four hundred?
Yes, you, right, so it's like, it's like in twenty-four, it was fifteen, eighty, sixteen hundred, let's just say.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, you budgeted for fifty, you didn't increase that, but and you didn't increase it, you know, you didn't factor anything for books or periodicals for last year for this current year, but you're jumping from about nineteen hundred to three thousand. It's a pretty large increase in, in, and I'm not that, look directly at my question, that you, Louis, that you're, you know, just the money guy, but the board, I guess, that's a pretty large increase, it's almost double, not quite, but it's, it's a pretty fair increase in that, so I'm just kind of wondering about that.
Marsha, can I just ask, I, so you're under guidance services on page two?
Yes.
I just want to make, I'm not, um, for professionals.
For supplies, books, and then your
Supplies, yeah.
Books, supplies, books, and you're not, which I understand, like, obviously, you didn't budget for the books and periodicals, you want to put money in the books.
So we, we in, yeah, we increased the supplies, the supply line by a thousand. Yeah, and that's some, I think, for some of our needy students, too, that we need some things for.
So when you're talking about supplies, you're talking about that, you're not talking about, that's your office supplies?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
To clarify that, thank you. Um, for, um, health services, it talks about substitutes there? Is that the line for actual substitutes or?
For the nurse.
Oh, just for the nurse?
Correct, so the nurse sub- subrate had to go up a little bit, because when they compared, um, what other area schools were paying, it was much more. So that has helped us to get a cup, uh, at least one more nurse up, which has been great.
Yeah, I just was, um, I wasn't sure.
No, good question. It's just the nurse sub.
Substitutes, and we overspent that. Oh, yeah, yeah, um. And, uh, down in technology services, same page, um, there's SU purchase services, an increase of twenty-six, twenty-six to seventy-five, I was just curious to know what that is.
Uh, so that is, uh, mostly, it is a combination, it's a combination of both software programs that are maintained at the SU level, because the, all of our schools are using them, as well as the infrastructure, technology infrastructure for internet and, uh, voice services. Uh, so those are paid for at the SU level, because we receive, um, quite a, quite a bit, um, federal reimbursement for those. Um, the ma- the increase is due to the fact that we've been subsidizing some of our software programs with ESSR funds for the last few years, and now the ESSR funds running out. Those SU, um, some of those programs that are SU programs, like, uh, EduClima or Jump Rope or whatever, those are now
Infinite Campus.
Infinite, uh, those are being pushed down to the, to those local levels.
And right above that communications, it's a pretty big decrease, like, it looked like in twenty-four, it was
So that is just a shift.
Went way up to fifteen thousand, and now we're back to three thousand?
Um, so it's just an accounting shift, that's now being covered under that SU purchase service line.
Okay, okay, good.
So that large increase is not the full increase, it's being, that's partially offset by that twelve thousand.
Okay, uh, on page three, um, I was curious to know the percentage that administrators, the little principal pocket change we have a town have a three percent increase for the employees, and I was curious to know what the percent increases for the administration?
So that is actually just based on actuals, that that is based on actual salaries today.
Do that.
But the, it's based on this year's, this year's salaries.
And it's eleven thousand dollars more? You mean the increase they got this year was just added into the budget, the same for next year?
Correct, so the increases are not directly in those lines, uh, so for the year in advance. So the increase that you're seeing is based on this year's increase that they
Okay, so they got four percent increase, you factored it in, but it's not set for next year?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Um, uh, down under fiscal services, what is cash flow, no interest? I'm just curious to know what that is.
Uh, s- so each year, districts have to get a tax anticipation note, which is a short-term loan to help fund their cash flow, and so that's the interest that we pay on that loan.
Uh, and then down under care operations, um, under repair and maintenance services, it's like halfway down that, it's it's up a lot, eight thousand, um, it was sixty-two?
Yeah, Marsha, where, hang on.
Oh, sorry.
No, so underwater sewer, that one?
Right, underwater sewer, yeah, yeah, maintenance services.
Sixty-two is what it was, but in actual, but, um, we didn't increase that line, it was ninety-five last year, it's ninety-five again.
And we were also, we did not purchase things, because we were told to hold off on maintenance.
Okay, so we not kept, okay.
And then we found out this fall that there was a surplus, so we did not, there were things that we were hoping to do, but we were told to pull back on the reins.
Um, grounds maintenance, it's an increase from last year, what was it, four thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Grounds maintenance, I thought we, we contract out, maybe?
Uh, we do for some things, but this is for, to help with some of the fields out back, like, the athletic fields, we need to do some maintenance and put a little more money, and we talked, I think, in the fall about the softball field, a little bit, and doing, it's one of the board goals. If you don't want me to answer the phone.
Fix the concrete field.
I don't, beach or under, um, you spoke about the transportation expense, and and you just
What line are you on? The transportation one?
Yeah, why, what happens is, so here's a deep, so, I think, we have to, while our gas, it's not whatever, it's a part of mine, could be in increase, so.
Uh, yes, so we receive a portion of all of our transportation expense back from the state as a reimbursement. And it's approximately forty-five percent that we receive back. Uh, but the the reimbursement is a a lag, it's, um, a, it's a two or three-year lag. And so we saw a pretty large increase in our transportation expense a a few years ago, because we had to rebid our contract, and so the reimbursement's starting to catch up on that, and so we're seeing more revenue that's offsetting the expense.
Um, and, um, where are the field trips or and sports? If I could back in here?
They're on the very last page, under co-curricular
Co-curricular?
Dues and fees and co-curricular transport. That's the seventh-grade trip and lifetime sports.
I'm sorry, repeat that, Louis?
It's the seventh-grade trip and lifetime sports.
Co-curricular transport?
Uh, the dues and fees and the co-curricular transport.
Includes both. Um, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'll say this again, and I don't care, but I, I will just say that I've noticed that the supplies are increased for preschool, supplies are increased for guidance, for principal's office, I don't think even playing, I think the magnitude supplies are, but the direct instruction, I know you say there's nine thousand, but there's also, you know, thirty teachers. I think that's interesting that, you know, you're increasing the supplies for all the different areas, but then, for that direct instruction, you're, you're, it's not, it's not safe to say. So I just, but I wanted to comment on that, I appreciate you like to answer your questions. Um, so, thank you, that's it, yeah.
For that point, on that, just encourage your fellow teachers, we we budgeted fifty, you spent forty-one, that's part of the surplus. Why we didn't increase it, because we're not spending all of the money, so. If there is a kickback in the teaching community, there's money to be spent on supplies, because we're not hitting, so.
And I'll just sort of say that, as a teacher, I'm speaking, I get told I get this amount in my budget, and that's what I get paid. And, yeah, I could go and ask Sarah, like, oh, can I get this, can I get this, but we are told as teachers, like, this is the amount, your budget for it, and, and so, I mean, as teachers, we're told that, we, we aren't aware of there's a surplus. Like, I, I wish I knew there was my dozen dollars I could buy. And that, I, I wish I knew there was nine thousand dollars, I could buy a home. She, I have a lot of stuff I could think of, like the music classroom and, and in sixth grade, or even middle school. So, um, you know, that's not going to last as a teacher. So, just to give you that. Thank you.
Thank you for saying. So, any other comments? So I think that we are in the middle of a. We need a motion to approve the warning. So article one, I'll just read it again. Shall the voters of Rottentown School District approve the school board to expand eleven million four hundred sixty thousand four hundred sixty eight dollars and thirty five cents? Which is the amount this school board has determined to be necessary for the SU this year. The Rottentown School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per pupil education spending of thirteen thousand five hundred eighty seven. Which is one point two seven percent higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. And article number two is to elect other school district officials as required by law, one for two years and one for three years. So. More discussion? All in favor?
Right. Right.
Any votes? Any yes? Or yes?
Do you want to bring that side?
I think that we do.
I'm sure. This will be the final.
So if there are no other comments online or in the room. We're at the end of the meeting, so I will adjourn. I know too. Good night, everyone. Louis?
Just only the board, you have to sign.
Can we stop the recording? Thank you.